Welcome, everybody. We've been upstairs in the executive session. We have come out. No decisions were made upstairs, but now we are going to have a couple of action items based on our meeting upstairs. We were meeting upstairs concerning a public safety building and also concerning online travel litigation. We have an action item, authorization of proposed settlement and authorization for the city administrator to execute certain settlement agreements as recommended by the city's litigation attorney related to the public safety building. I make that as a motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes. Action item number two, authorization of proposed settlements and authorization for city administrator to execute certain settlement agreements as recommended by the city's litigation attorneys related to online travel company case. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Nays? Passes. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a couple of minutes before council.
Yeah, I'm going to run upstairs and...
If anybody needs to take a break, take a break.
Six o'clock.
Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you, Jesse, Chris.
Thank you so much.
Together, this is Tuesday, February 27th. It's 6:05, sorry we're running five minutes late, but we just wanted to make sure everybody was here. The first order of business is invocation. Will everybody rise, please? And before we get started, I want to make sure that everybody knows that the public and the press were duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Thank you. Oh, Lord, thank you for this marvelous February day on Isle Palms. We ask for your guidance in helping us make the right decisions for the island, the community, our environment for generations to come. We ask you to look over those who protect us, both here and afar, and look over those who are sick. Again, Lord, we thank you for everything you've blessed us with, in your great name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hooray.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Corrin.
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Howard.
Thank you. Reading of the Journal of Previous Meetings, as opposed to doing it all, I'd like to make a motion that we accept special meeting of January 16th, regular meeting of January 23rd, public hearing of January 23rd, and special council meeting of January 23rd.
So move.
Any debate? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. And nays? Ayes, have it. Moving on. Citizens' comments. Do we have anybody who wants to say anything to us? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name and address.
I thought there were all these people over here. I didn't know you were here to listen to me. My name is Ed Gwilt. Good evening, and my wife is with me tonight. We own the property at 4 on 25th Avenue, and we've had that for seven years. We've torn down the existing home and been trying to build a new home in its place since September last year. The delays, the cost overruns, the runaround by the Water and Sewer Commission have left us frustrated and wondering what we have to do in order to move forward. I'm here just to shed a little light on the circumstances and hopefully gauge some sort of resolution to the end, to end the delays. Let me be clear, all we want to do is to build our home on our lot and be good citizens of the community. So here's a brief history. A year ago, we hired Carl McCamps, who is a locally-known architect. He drew our house. In August of 17th, we hired Lane Baker of Saltwater Homes, another local builder known on the island. We've also retained Mickey Seabrook at the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Department to design our grinder pump. About a year ago, however, when we were talking with the Water Department about keeping our septic, we were told that that would not be a problem. This was a year ago. However, through D- and DHEC also later said it would not be a problem for us to keep it. However, we later learned that the building codes on the island will not, so we are going to go with the grinder pump and hook to the septic. But we had been sort of misled early on. On February 1st, we applied for our permit to install the grinder pump and to hook to the city sewer. On February 2nd, I received a call from an individual at the Water and Sewer Department on my phone and left a message, which I could play for you right now if you'd like. But basically, he said that our application for the grinder pump had been approved on February 2nd. All we needed to do was stop by Monday, pay the impact fee, sign a few papers, and they'd give us a receipt that we then could take over to the Building Department to get our building permit. So as instructed, on Monday, May 5th, my wife and I went over to the Water Department to pay our fees, get the receipt. I'd signed several of the papers, but I did not get a copy of them, and they would not take my check for the fee or help me get anything to get my building permit, even though that's what the voicemail had said from Friday. We were told at that point we should meet with a Water and Sewer Commissioner and give him the check, and then we'd get our building permit the next day. We immediately went across the street here to the city offices where Linda Tucker was kind enough to meet with us, and I played her the voicemail. She made it very clear that the city does not have authority over the Water Department, which was the first that we learned of that. We also spoke to the building inspector at that time, who then finally explained to us in order to get the building permit, he needed the Water and Sewer to sign off on a grinder pump permit first. Coincidentally, that same day, a commissioner from the Water and Sewer Department called my wife and has to meet with us at a restaurant so he could explain things to us. So two days later, Wednesday, September 7th, we met with a water commissioner for coffee at Acme Cantina. We came in with a check in hand, as we were instructed, for the impact fees. We talked briefly about the issues of the sewer system on the island and very high costs, and we suggested that the city hire a grant writer in order to try to get some infrastructure money that might be coming available through the federal government and state or county. The commissioner replied, "I don't like to pay for sewage in Des Moines, Iowa." We stated that every resident on the island has paid their taxes already. Des Moines Island was getting their fair share, but we were not. It seemed to me that this official did not want other government agencies meddling in the IOP water and sewer business. The meeting ended with us specifically asking that commissioner for what we had to do to get our permit. The commissioner told us the only thing between us and getting our building permit was his signature. We specifically asked for that. His reply that he was not going to work that day, Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m. He would also not take our check for $3,825, as we were told that he would. That was 20 days ago. Permit has still not been issued. I have a check with me, by the way. On this past Wednesday, I attended the Water and Sewer Commission public meeting. After the meeting, I was told that we would be able to pick up whatever we needed by Friday, the 23rd. Again, so my builder then called the office Friday, last Friday, the 23rd, and that promise- and the individual that made that promise was not even at work. At this point, we're simply exhausted. We jumped through every hoop we've been asked to. Every time we're told, "Do this, you'll get your permit; do that, you'll get your permit," and then the rules change and another hoop is put in front of us. We would like the Water and Sewer Commission to complete our application, take our check that we've been carrying around for 25 days now. We'd like the City of Isle Palms and the Water Commission to work together so some of this can be done simultaneously. These delays are costly, stressful, and unnecessary. I do understand that the Water and Sewer Commission are separate legal entities from that of the Isle of Palm and this council. However, their actions cast a very negative shadow on the entire island. Our home will take a year to build. The grinder pump goes in somewhere near the end of that. We're not going to build a new home and not dispose of our sewage. We're not going to keep it. Okay? I promise we're not going to keep it. So please, can we get our building permit in some fashion? Thank you for your attention today.
Sir?
Yes?
You seem to have written comments. May I have a copy?
No, ma'am. I'd be happy to clean them up for you, however. I mean, we were struggling and trying to put these together. If you have a copying machine, I guess I would be happy to give you a copy of that if you want to do that, because they're really not very clean neat.
That's okay.
There's no cuss words in there.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Satimio. I live in number 25, 24th Avenue. My complaint is about dogs, out-of-town dogs. About three weeks ago, I was going into Park Park with my dog, and when you do that, all the dogs inside the park come running up to the gate, and so you've got to use your body to block them from getting out while your dog gets in. I got bit by a dog, and I had two layers of pants on, because it was really cold that day, and I know he would have drawn blood if I hadn't had those two pants on, and I told the dog, I said, I yelled it out, I said, "Who owns this dog?" Nobody said anything. Yelled it out again, kind of mean-like, I said, "Who owns this dog?" And finally, one guy owned up to it, who I've never met him before, I'd never seen his dogs before. And I told him, "Get his dog out of here." He bit me, and I showed him the wet mark on my leg, you know? And he started saying, well, the dog was excited. I said, "I don't care." I said, "Get him out of here." And I figured he'd never come back. Well, this past week, I saw his car down there again, and so I just turned around with my golf cart, my dog, you know? I ain't going in there again with that dog. And today, I went in there, and there's another guy in there, and he, this first guy did have two dogs, by the way, and so there was a guy coming to the gate the same time I did, and he had two dogs also. And as I was trying to get into the gate, one of his dogs, both of the dogs growl a little bit, but one was kind of like mean, growling, and I says, "Is this going to be okay?" He said, "Yeah, I'm pretty sure it'll be all right." You know, so he gets in the little foyer area, and then he goes into the main one, and then I go into the foyer area, and his dog's right there at the gate, really growling, and I said, "I don't think this is going to work out." He said, "Well, I'll take this dog and put him in the small pen, and you can let your dog in with my other dog." I said, "Okay." So we did that, and about that time, one of the neighbors came up with their dogs, and now we've got three dogs in the main area, and they're getting along fine. And without us realizing it, the guy turned his other dog loose into the main area. He made a beeline, and he started fighting with my dog until I chased him off my dog, then he got the other lady's dog, he's chewing on it, and I'm chasing this dog around in the park trying to keep in between my dog and his dog. Okay, what I'm getting at is, what I'm asking for is for you, city council, to, how about we start requiring out-of-town people to have a license? I'm thinking like $25. This would discourage some people from coming here. Probably people who have mean dogs who don't take care of their dogs anyhow. You know, I'm hoping it would, but it would surely cut down. There's a lot of dogs in that park park, and a lot of them, they don't even live over here. People are just coming from Mount Pleasant to let their dogs run. There's people that come from North Charleston to let their dogs run in the park park. They're also on the beach running loose at the correct times, which is fine unless, you know, their dog is mean, and there's been mean dogs out at the beach also. My dog been chewed up, not chewed up, but, you know, you had to break up a little bit of a fight. And one guy out there, he had a Doberman Pinsler, and a couple people, maybe about three people at least that I know, me being one, told him, "You need to do something to this dog. You need to keep him on a leash." And finally, he chewed up another guy's dog, and the guy said, "Get the dog off the beach and stay off the beach." And he did. I can't believe that. This other guy, the first one that chewed that bit me, he did come back. And I'm thinking, being he knows that his dog bit me, he'd be thankful that I just didn't call the cops or something, you know? And we'd make a report on it. You know, he'd be happy to just get the get out of jail free card and not come back, but here he did come back. So anyhow, I was thinking with the overuse of the park park, a lot of dogs running loose on the beach at the correct time, we could cut that down a little bit if you just started charging a fee for out-of-towners for their dogs to run loose on the beach and the park park. I also think there ought to be a, they ought to have to sign a waiver of some sort or some kind of agreement stating that their dogs are not aggressive. So at least if they do that, they know that they're not allowed to have an aggressive dog loose on the beach or loose in the park park. And that way, if somebody makes a complaint and it's like, well, you know that this isn't right, you can hit them up for a fine. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other citizens?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Patricia Ryan. I live at 6 Forest Trail Court, 1. I have not been present for a long time because I've had family matters, and I just came back just recently, so I missed all the forums. However, I came home to a whistle that wouldn't bother anybody, including my dogs, and a clap is so supposed to scare away a coyote. Now, I'm sorry. That was a joke. It was a waste of money. You probably got it at Walmart, and that's what it looked like, some little toy you'd put in somebody's stocking. I know the issue of coyotes is a serious issue, and you're trying, you're struggling with it. I understand that. But I also read about trappers. Now, I'm paying taxes and holding on by a thread to stay in my home. I'm 71 years old. I don't want to move. To pay a trapper a fee is extra high because that trapper has to actually endanger himself because he has to take the animal off-island to euthanize it. So that adds an extra fee to his fee. So I am not going to spend money on a trapper. I currently am helping out a canine officer who just got a new dog that didn't like the puppy he had in his house. It's a year-old miniature beagle. It's 15 pounds, so I now have coyote bait in my yard besides my own dog, who is getting very big, even though she's a puppy. I don't know the answer, except to say that it's a health concern, which I brought up a long time ago about that business of rabies. And as a nurse, rabies is nothing to fool around with. And if you get bitten by, get any contact with a coyote, or your animal does, you're not going to know which one did it. They're not going to have a tag on them. I just came back from a sanctuary city for illegals to an island that's a sanctuary city for coyotes for a long time now. I can't believe that they are so smart that you're ascribing them to your human brain, because that's what some people seem to be doing, too. They're trying to make them into being superhuman beings that understand everything that's going on. They're wily. Okay, I'll agree with that. But I think to think that our brains are a little bit more developed than theirs are and issues, and the problem with PETA, which is present, and I understand that, I have dealt with because of their, well, because I did come in contact when we were testing for cancer drugs, and they just started to destroy the, go against the animals, the mice we were using. So I have a little issue with PETA in general. But I think these animals have to be exterminated. I have no qualms about it. They are predators. They are not pets. I know that they so had someone, they said was a pet at the forum. I've been reading everything from long distance. You have to do something because they are all over now. I am 71 years old. I can't fight a coyote, and I don't have no intention of fighting a coyote, but I'm going to protect my own. There's been too many animals killed on this island, too many pets. We love our pets. They're our companions. There are a lot of elderly women on this island, I'm elderly, but I'm not in that category right now, that are stressing out because they can't take their animals for a walk safely. They can't, they used to be able to leave them, go out in their yard, which they built fences around so that they wouldn't have to be running down after the pet. They would give, let the pet have their freedom to go out at night. These same people who are elderly, stress is not good for them. It causes physical ills in an elderly person. So I don't know what you're going to do, but talking about it, I'm so sick of listening to the talk, and I've seen this in other issues. You talk it to death, and you still don't do anything. And you're going to have to really, you know, this is a serious problem. It's been ignored for too long. They don't, they're not on a leash. Our dogs are on a leash, and they're all over the island, and I've come in contact with them, not directly. They were outside my house for quite a while, but they didn't get any to eat then, so they went someplace else and ate somebody's cat. I think that maybe, instead of treating them as a human brain, our human brains could certainly figure out how to get rid of them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve Trainum. Home board. Name, address, company.
Hey, everyone. Stephen Trainum with Coastal Science Engineering just wanted to give an update on the beach nursery project and be here if you had any questions for it. Project is going very well. They've, to date, they've put about a million cubic yards of sand on the beach, so we're around 70% of the project being completed. If the weather holds out and they don't have any more mechanical breakdowns or anything, they should be finished up within two weeks. Unless we are able to get this FEMA work, then it will be another, about two weeks after that. So from that standpoint, as far as progress and efficiency, everything's going real well with that. They've completed about 5,000 feet of beach out of a total of about 9,000 feet, so the distance there, they still have about 4,000 feet to go. They have finished the area from about Beach Club Villas and the property owners of Beach House and Wild Dunes all the way to the west of 56th Avenue. So that's good. I know a couple of issues that have arose or questions that have been asked by some of the homeowners have dealt with the mud rollers that were present for a little while, and those, for the most part, are gone. Most of those all dissipated naturally, just kind of get worn down as in the waves. We also had a crew come out over the weekend and pick up any that were visible down past the project that had washed up. And that's something that, it's just kind of a byproduct of the setting that we're in. You know, we took extensive samples of the offshore area out there trying to find the best quality sand, but we knew that we did have a chance of running into some mud out there just because of the proximity to the inlet, the amount of river discharge we have, the way the shoals kind of create ridges and runnels in our high-low areas. It's just one of those areas that's very dynamic out there. So, and the dredge has actually been surprised, too, on, we're in good material, and they think that, okay, we're in a real good spot, and then immediately adjacent to it, they run into a little bit more bad material. So most of all, that was restricted to the western end of the bar area, so we've moved out of that area completely now, and we're not going to go back into it. So I think we're kind of out of anywhere where that may be a concern. Again, if you go out there now, you may see one or two, but we're going to keep checking on it, even down the beach, to make sure that there's not, you know, they're not washing up in subsequent high tides, but it's just kind of one of those things that we have to deal with out here as we try to find the best settlement we can. To kind of get, put it in perspective on the magnitude of this project and how a little bit of unsuitable material can be very visual. If we looked at 1.4 million cubic yards of sand, if one-half of 1% of that was clay or mud, that still equals about 450 dump trucks worth. So that's the, you know, the size we're dealing with. So the amount that we've seen on the beach is actually a very, very small percentage of the material. So again, whether it's rocks, mud, high concentrations of shell, as a dredge goes through, it takes a very, very small percentage to be somewhat visible on the beach. So overall, we've been very happy with the material. After we were kind of forced into working in these bar areas that, again, even if we were in that area where the state store preservation area was, is being considered, there's still a chance that you'd run into some types of material like this, so we're overall very happy with that. The other issue that I know a couple of homeowners have asked is why the project stopped where it did. So when we designed the project, we were looking at the condition of the beach and what specifically, what areas of the beach, you know, had the most threat to structures and where the shoals and the erosion that's associated with shoals is really focused at. And that, for this project, happened to be about 57th, or 57th Avenue or so. So we decided in engineering that we're going to put the majority of the fill in that area where the erosion was most severe. Once you get to 56th, 55th, 54th Avenue and west of there, the beach really juts out, and you might not have a wide sandy beach, but if you look at the vegetation buffer between the structures and where the water line is, it gets really wide there. So there's not a lot of justification for putting a lot of excess sand right there right now because we know that we're going to get an extensive amount of sand moving into that area over the next several years. We've built, we've kind of overbuilt the area in front of Beachwood East and even moving further around, knowing that that sand is what's going to be feeding the southern end of the island for years to come. And we know this because we saw it after the 2008 project. If you look just down drift from that project, within the first year, the area just south of where we nourished grew over 100 feet, and it grew even further years after that. And even still today, that area has two dune ridges that are new dune ridges from that sand that's washed down there. So we fully anticipated that sand moving down, and we would rather put more sand kind of at the head of the stream so it'll feed downstream longer, rather than kind of spreading it out further. So if we did that, the sand that we put there now would already be moving further down in areas that are already, you know, pretty healthy. So we did design it, you know, for that purpose. We knew that was going to happen. We didn't, you know, just stop it at 57th because that happened to be kind of where the Wild Dunes boundary somewhat is. That really had nothing to do with it. We were looking at what areas of the beach we thought needed it for immediate protection and where it would best serve the whole island in the long term. So with that, that's kind of the update. Any questions? I think the company has been doing a very good job, the contractor, Great Lakes Dock and Dredge, and just the way they've maintained the site, they've really tried to limit their footprint to leave as much of the beach open as possible. They've kept it neat. They haven't been just constantly driving up and down the beach needlessly or anything like that, so I think they've done a very good job in just trying to maintain it tidy, you know, out of the way, as minimally intrusive project as possible. I will let you know as, what to kind of look for over the next several weeks and months as the beach will adjust. You'll see, you know, within a couple of weeks, a lot of sand start to move down in front of those other avenues. You'll see a lot of wind-blown sand start to move up into the dune. Out there today, you can kind of see sheets of sand blowing, which is what we want. We want sand to be able to blow around and move up into the dunes. You'll see some adjustment of the profile as, we build it kind of steep, and then it'll flatten out over time as the waves, you know, working into a natural profile. When the project is nearing completion or complete, they will till the beach. That's a requirement of the permit to kind of soften the sand for the sea turtles. So once they do that, it'll actually make it a good bit softer, and for a couple of weeks, right after they do it, it's going to be probably a little softer than you'd like it. It'll make it a little bit harder to trudge across, especially in the wider areas. So that's just kind of something to look out for. It'll work itself out, but do encourage the council and public to kind of understand. Give it a couple of weeks and a couple of months to really, you know, let nature work it around a little bit. Right now, we're still in the middle of an active construction zone, so it's not going to look like it's going to look, you know, six months from now and a year from now. So a lot of growing to do. With that, any questions that...
Chris. Linda, any update on the status of FEMA, the additional funds?
We continue to check almost daily, at least two or three times a week, and I think we reached out right before the meeting, you know, because we knew that the question was going to be asked, but we still have not heard anything. As Stephen says, the contractor has moved. They flipped, and they're moving the opposite direction from where they were, but if, you know, if we get an answer, we still might be within the money that has already been authorized for the change order. So we're, you know, we're continuing to push, and we're continuing to try, and it's now at the Consolidated Resource Center, so it's at the decision-making spot, and we're just, you know, waiting for them to act on it.
Do we have a date certain when that becomes impractical? We could take advantage of that?
We, I've been, we've already given them two days. One has already passed, and then, you know, we had a, we had a March date, too. And much of it depends, when the dredge goes down for mechanical difficulties, then while we want them to continue to make good progress, that works to our advantage related to this FEMA deadline. So I don't know if Stephen wants to speak to that. If they finish, then our numbers are out the window.
Once the dredging is complete, so again, if we have good weather and they don't have any more breakdowns, then, you know, anywhere from eight to 10, 12 days, they could be finished with the project. And they're not going to want to sit and wait on potential work. Especially it's, in their eyes, it's a pretty small, you know, quantity and amount. Hopefully, we'll hear something from FEMA this week. You know, again, they said it was going to be their top priority in that CRC, criteria that the dredger is fully aware. They're kind of already planning for it. It's just they can't, you know, without an actual counsel to go ahead and say, yeah, we'll just do it and assume the money's coming, which I do. But I understand not signing the paper until it's, you know, more guaranteed. There's, there's just really nothing we can do. But as soon as they're done, they're going to pack up the dredge and go. So really, within the next week, we really need to know something.
Stephen, one other question. You talked about how the sand in the dune will shift and move around for a while and settle out. It reminded me of several meetings ago, I inquired about city staff looking into funding to re-vegetate the dunes. Are you aware of any funding sources for that?
I'm not. I don't think. That may qualify for some of the state funds. But I don't think that that's, there's no other grants I know of off the top of my head for it.
Thank you. Councilmember France?
Stephen, when you say completed this project, that's putting 1.4 million cubic yards, okay. And if we put the additional 281,000, where does that sand go?
It would go towards the center of the project. Part of the reason for that is to just allow them to build it efficiently. If we tried to stretch it out over the whole project, then the price would go significantly up because it's a lot more mobilization and coordination on extending pipes. And there's kind of a certain minimum quantity they need to be able to work efficiently. The other part of that is by putting it there, it will spread both directions and kind of be another source of future sand. As we've seen it spreading from that area, that area in the center has been the most erosional within wild dunes the past several months. So we'd be restoring some of that area and kind of using it as a feeder beach.
But if we don't get that 281,000 more, we have completed the 1.4, which was the original project. So we are not doing anything less than what we had?
Correct. We wouldn't be doing anything less.
Okay.
And we have already kind of made some adjustments to our design to account for some of that erosion in the center. But this will be even more of an advantage and a long-term benefit to the whole area.
Councilmember Ward?
I have something that relates to this. Representative Mike Satelli came by to see me Saturday. He'd catch up from time to time. And he came by and told me about the budget was going on at the State House. And right now, they got $17 million in there for beach rest, uh, re-nourishment funds. He said, now, they might, they might kick it out, you know, because some of the upstate fellows don't particularly like us getting any benefits. But I think it's worth the mayor, administrator, knowing about this, pursuing this money. It's in there now and it's for the whole coast. And he says, you just have to, you know, tell them you want some. And if it stays through the process, I think we need to be in line to get a whole, get our fair share of that 17 million. So it's going to be, a month from now, it'll be over with. Either we'll have it or we won't. And I'm sure Chip will help us.
Sure.
And Mike's on board.
We got less than two weeks, so road trip.
So Mike, Representative Satelli is talking about the ways and, what Ways and Means has put into the budget. And as Councilmember Ward states, it has to survive the budget process. Then it would, part of the source of the money that's paying for the project now is that same source. This would be replenishing that grant source with PRT. So then it would go, be given, allocated to PRT. And we would follow likely the same application process that we followed for this particular grant.
Well, he's on that committee.
Yeah, on Ways and Means, yes.
Yeah.
Linda, if that amount holds, that's less than what they put in last year, correct? Or this fiscal year?
That would be more. The original amount was 30 million.
Right.
That was two years ago. I think last year, they added another five or seven. So this will be a kind of a bump up from last year. And from my understanding, the way PRT comes up with that number is they kind of forecast out what they think the communities will need, you know, over the next year or two. And you can build that number. And they usually send in a higher number and it gets knocked down and they come somewhere in the middle.
So this is 17 in addition to the baseline, not total?
Right, correct.
So it's, to clarify, did we miss the window where it was going to be less expensive for us to add the sand in by virtue of the fact that they turned?
We, they have already turned. So the unit price for the work may be a little bit higher now. If I could tell them today, then it would probably be the same. But every day we go, it's probably going to start being a little bit higher.
Okay.
Because they're going to have to break back and kind of redo some areas.
Okay. And as far as the mud rollers, so you're saying that they've dissipated by that? That means that they've, we don't, are not probably going to see, like, are they, could they potentially resurface?
So we picked up several of them, not a dump truck load or anything like that. But we did have a crew out over the weekend, kind of checking. And after subsequent high tides, you would see some. And by the end of the weekend, they really weren't seeing very many. I didn't, again, I saw a handful today, but very small.
So long-term, you would?
So long-term, if there are some that are kind of buried in the fill, you may see one pop out. But it will erode itself pretty fast naturally. If it ever does appear that it's something where it looks like it's a problem. Again, it's a very, very small percentage of the total volume of sand out there. And when it gets worked in the ocean, it heals itself pretty naturally.
And it's not going to create a muddy beach?
No, it won't be a muddy beach. Again, anytime you do a fill, you want some rain and you want some of the berm to kind of wash over. So if we get a good high tide, and might do it today with these onshore winds that we have that are honking out there pretty good right now, it'll wash over the berm a little bit, which kind of, you know, cleans the sand and it'll, it'll work itself out. But you do need to give it a couple of weeks to a couple of months to really start, you know, not looking like a freshly constructed beach.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Linda, I know you're on the phone constantly and thank you for staying on the phone with them. Steve, thank you very much.
For council's benefit too, if you don't mind, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the police department. They've been doing a really good job out there coordinating with keeping people out of the construction zone when Great Lakes dredge and docks has had, you know, some challenges with people who want to get too close. And so I'd like to thank them for their work out there. It's really helped to keep the peace.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Reports from standing committees, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means Committee met at 5:00 Tuesday, February 20th, 2018. We approved the previous meeting's minutes. Citizens comments, had several citizens come forward to speak to us. Liz McMillan from 1010 Ocean Boulevard appealed to committee to eliminate vehicle parking on the ocean side of Ocean Boulevard between J.C. Long and Pavilion. For the area to become loading zones for active deliveries of the 11 restaurants and shops that front the beach. Joe Petro, owner of Coconut Joe's and Island Joe's, requested that the city consider a two-tiered parking fee structure for municipal parking lots as a full, as opposed to a full-day rate of $10 currently charged. Elizabeth Kempson spoke to the committee about a more resident-friendly summary of city's finances. Excuse me. Ted McKnight had comments about the article in a posting career. He found it to be somewhat hostile towards the city for considering charging visitors to park on Palm Boulevard. Sarah Parker Daniel recommended an online parking system that would allow visitors to book a parking space before they come to the island. Roy Cooper stated he has lived in other areas where one had to pay for the services they received in terms of parking. Therefore, he thought it reasonable for the city to have a mechanism to pay for parking in the form of off-island beachgoers where their parking was available on the island. Bill Campbell stated he'd been away from the island for a month and missed the citizens forum held early in the month. He recommended that city have only minimum number of parking spaces required by law. Then we had, under new business, discussion of amendments to manage beach parking such as requiring payment to park on Palm Boulevard. Very healthy discussion with all council members taking part. Financial statements. Treasurer Stuggs stated at the end of January 2018, general fund revenues were approximately $5 million of 49% of budget. General fund expenditures were 52% of budget, with a seven-month target being 58%. Total revenues citywide were approximately $11,700,000, which can constitute a 40% of fiscal year 18 budget. Total expenditures citywide were approximately $10,300,000 of 30% of budget. The treasurer noted that cash balances continue to be strong, but they will begin, will begin to increase as the city embarks on several very large projects. Tourism funds, we had a report. ATAX and Beach Preservation Fee are up 2%. Hospitality tax was up 5% over previous year. And state ATAX, and the city's running 3% ahead of fiscal year 17. Went through the project worksheets. We only just had a report on that. The front beach restroom renovation project has a $20,000 surplus when compared to the budget, to the contract. And the city has not received any construction pay applicants to date. That was on February 20th. But one new schedule was for the replacement of underground fuel storage tanks in the public work site in Alapamis Marina. Second new worksheet was where Marina Bulkhead rehabilitation, the comparison between the project budget and the contract shows a surplus in a budget of approximately $76,000. No old business, new business. We have consideration of contract awards to Benson Ford Nissan in the amount of $49,756. That's $24,878 times two. State-controlled prices for two 2018 Ford Interceptor Sedans. And that's page 25, line 112. Municipal compensation tax fund, police department capital outline lay $64,000 and an award in amount of $25,083 state contract prices for one 2018 Ford Interceptor sedan unmarked, page 28, and a line 278. State compensation tax fund, police department capital outline lay $32,000. I say all that to let you know that it's already in the budget. And so we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's our second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, sign the five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. A second item is, let me coordinate here. Yep. Consideration of an agreement with the Palms Hotel for their guests and employees to park in municipal parking lots. And Linda, you probably know where that negotiations are, as well, right now, right?
Yes. What we would like for council to do on this action is authorize entering into the agreement, subject to continued legal work, because we have just a few tweaks that we need to make to the agreement, to the draft that you all have in front of you, such as we want to make sure it refers to both lots, A and B, not just one of the two lots. We also think that the departure time should be changed to noon, not 8:00 AM, because of course, people checking out of a hotel, it's not realistic for it to be 8:00 AM. And then we wanted to add that the payment of the fees would be due, reporting due on the 7th of the month. And then add some language that the hotel will ensure proper usage of the tags and seasonal passes, that any kind of improper use would not be the responsibility of the city and could be ticketed by the Alapamis Police Department. And we want to beef up the assumption of risk language that's in there just to make sure that, you know, that the city doesn't bear any responsibility for any misuse or anything that might occur with it. And then we need to add the additional exhibit of Lot B onto the agreement. So if we could get a motion that the agreement in general, you know, is acceptable to council and then we'll continue to tweak these little things in the actual written materials.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Is the agreement having out for the city? We know parking's a problem on the island. It's only going to increase if we find that we need the lot for other purposes, even if there's a disaster and we're using it for debris removal. Do we have an out and a clause that we can?
It has a 60-day with or without cause termination. And then I believe there's language, I'm not sure, I can put my hand on it.
It's also just a one-year contract. And it can be renewed with the agreement of both parties. So it's up to council again to think about it next year. So one year at a time. And then if you decide that you want to terminate early, all you have to do is give 60 days notice. And that time period can be changed if you would like.
Any further concerns? Yes?
So you mentioned changing the check, or the end time from 8:00 AM to noon. Is that, are they charged at all for that four hours?
For the additional time? I don't think it contemplated charging more for the additional time. Because just it's just more realistic with, and their tags would say that, good until, you know, which would be up to the hotel to produce.
But we would potentially, on a busy day, lose the revenue that they were, would be taking up that spot that somebody else couldn't park in it, if it was like a Saturday or a Sunday?
That's possible, yes.
But not probable.
Right.
Any other concerns, questions? Any non-moral call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Item three. Consideration of a change order from Philip Smith Contracting in the amount of $27,671 relative to the public restrooms and dune walkover, page 47, line 142, capital projects rehab public restrooms, state ATAX $317,000, beach preservation fee $175,000, plan Palm Isle of Palms Fund $18,000, totally $565,000, with a balance remaining of $50,520. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, sign the five of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. See what else I got, if anything. We talked about changing the IOP procurement code, but that went down to a narrative beat four to five. And that's pretty much my report. And the next meeting will be?
March 20th.
March 20th at 5:00, 5:00 PM. So end your report. Okay. All right, public safety.
All right. We are busy, so I'll try to get through this efficiently. We met at 4:00 PM Monday, February 5th at City Hall with all members, including myself, council members Ward and Bell, our administrator and city staff. We considered a request to add the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk on Saturday, October 27th, 2018, as a city-sponsored event from the American Cancer Society. But through discussion, we found that high tide that day would, could cause difficulties for the walk, which is tied to national events and does not have much flexibility on timing. While our committee voted to present the request to full counsel, the American Cancer Society representative later contacted us by email to withdraw the request because the requirements of the event weren't, aren't suited for an IOP beach walk. I have also been in touch with her and the local business, trying to connect them to see if it might work out for the business to host a related fundraiser in the weeks before the walk. Curtis Kendall of 42nd Avenue brought us concerns about construction noise as well as parking and short-term rentals. And then we did also discuss construction noise ordinance hours, which we will be addressing later in our meeting with a proposed ordinance change. For livability reasons for our residents, our committee voted to recommend changing hours for, allowed for construction noise, which are currently 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, and changing those so that no construction would be allowed on Sundays and Saturdays would be restricted from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The proposed wording of the ordinance that we have to consider also reflects what I believe is the desire of the committee not to restrict work projects by homeowners beyond what is already allowed in our noise ordinances. So the wording of that section of the ordinance would now be specific to any contractor, subcontractor, landscaper, supplier, or vendor. I've talked to multiple contractors who live on the island. Their greatest concern in their conversations with me seemed to be that we protect the early start of 7:00 AM, which works well for their industry and allows off-island workers to avoid traffic as they drive in. workers to avoid traffic as they drive in. Beyond our committee's recommendation, I thought we could also consider changing the end time from seven PM to six PM during the weekdays, which falls more closely in line with what Wild Dunes asked. Most island contractors I talked with did not have strong concerns about this, but more recently, I've talked to some who do have some concerns that during the hot months, crews tend to take a longer break midday and can really use that extra hour when it's cooler in the evening on a summer day to make progress. So in the end, we should remember that these crews are doing work for our residents, and it's good for them to work efficiently so they can complete projects faster. Police and fire reports, we heard reports from Fire Chief Graham and Police Chief Buchanan, but for expediency, I will point you to the committee minutes for most of those details and just highlight a couple of items. We discussed replacing the city's seventy-five-foot ladder truck due to defects that would otherwise take around one hundred thousand dollars and nine to twelve months to repair. This fire truck was not scheduled to be replaced in this fiscal year, but because of the condition of the truck, it has been moved up in the replacement schedule, and the truck originally scheduled for replacement will be deferred a year. Typically, once ordered, the manufacturer takes approximately a year to produce a new fire truck. So the estimated cost of this new fire truck will be between eight hundred and twenty-five thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand. The current truck dates back to two thousand and three, when a station was not available to house it, so it has been exposed to more elements than its replacement will be. The city's policy is to budget funds, for funds to be set aside or reserved each year so that the purchase of large vehicles, such as fire trucks and garbage trucks, can be accomplished without financing of any kind. We evidently have two hundred thousand dollars in our current budget for the down payment, and the balance should be available when the truck is delivered in fiscal year nineteen, according to our administrator. Also, from our police chief, in January, we continued to have a string of vehicles being entered illegally at residences, many of which were unlocked, or the vehicles were unlocked. And our chief would again like to remind residents to please be more vigilant in locking vehicles in homes. We also had a short discussion about providing more bicycle paths on the island and overnight parking on city-owned property and lots, but took no action on these items. Now, time for a coyote update. So, and I just wanted to take a second to say, we're in a challenging situation with a coyote population that has moved in and become too comfortable on our island around humans and in human spaces. And that has, and that population has likely killed more than a few cats and attacked dogs as well. Our islanders appreciate wildlife and our environment, but we see a danger for our pets. And while they aren't common targets, we also have some concern for kids and people. I know we just, in essence, we've got to get a handle on this situation. So we have taken measures and made changes to update you all on the expo that we hosted a coyote expo on Thursday, February twenty-second, at the Recreation Center, that included exhibits with our police department, Sullivan's Island, Dewey's Island, South Carolina DNR, animal control contractors, the Wild Dunes Coyote Coalition, and the IOP Coyote Dashboard of BetterIOP.com. Sean Poppy, who does outreach education for the University of Georgia's Savannah River Ecology Lab, also brought a coyote that he has raised after it was rescued as a pup. Scooter, who stayed in his crate during the event. Some people we did pick up on, on social media raised concerns about Scooter's presence at the presentation, and we appreciate, I know I do, their worries that the coyote might be stressed by the situation. But I think it's important to note that Sean and his coyote do numerous community outreach visits, and that Sean has a special permit to keep a coyote, which has a large enclosed area to stay in during the day when he's not working, and an indoor kennel with a run at night. They have a webpage called A Coyote Named Scooter, where you can find more information about them. As far as trapping, we have, our committee received a report on the city's coyoting trapping efforts, and I've also received, we've received more recent information from our city administrator about that. Since February of two thousand and sixteen, the city has been using, had been using three box traps, which produced only one trapped and euthanized coyote over close to two years. I understand that box traps are widely considered to be almost ineffective for trapping coyotes. In January two thousand and eighteen, the city switched to five soft leg hold traps, which produced one trapped and euthanized coyote within a couple of weeks in early February. These soft leg hold traps are a later generation of traps that, my understanding is that they should not cause substantial injury to the coyote, from what I've been told. And they are required to be checked at least daily, if not more frequently? Is it more than once a day?
I don't think it's more than once a day.
Okay. Which results in added expense. Expenses for trapping are ongoing, so long as the traps are deployed. The city has spent approximately six thousand, six hundred dollars since February of two thousand and sixteen on trapping and two wireless cameras that we've also deployed. But because we stepped up efforts, the budget for fiscal year eighteen is likely to be exceeded for this year's line item, so the council will need to address that for this year and the upcoming. Our staff might be able to speak to this better, but I believe the expense is likely going to be at least a thousand dollars a month for our current level of?
If we keep going, like we're going, yes.
And an additional two hundred dollars each time a coyote has, that has been trapped, is removed. Wild Dunes Community Association has been trapping with leg hold traps on areas around their golf course, independent of what we are doing. The trapper for Wild Dunes, who was at the expo, told me that they had not yet had success, though. I also wanted to introduce in this forum, the possibility that we might get more involved with doing study and research. The city has been in contact with wildlife management expert Dr. John Kilgo, a federal researcher with the Forest Service, the Savannah River Site, who has authored recent coyote studies about the impact of trapping on reproductive and population rates. He has given us some preliminary information about methods they could help use to estimate and further study our coyote population and movements. Members of our council have received a forwarded copy of this email, I believe, which offers that following, the following possibilities and rough estimates of costs. One would be studying DNA from coyote scat gathered in the area to identify the minimum number of coyotes, which could, he had an estimated cost of three to five thousand dollars. Also, another possibility is to use radio telemetry to better understand whether individual coyotes are resident to a particular island or move more freely over a much larger area, which would have an implication on how effective any control program might be. This would require trapping, collaring, and releasing coyotes, but he says that even doing this for five, seven coyotes could be very informative. But that costs about two thousand, two hundred per collar, so that would get up in the twenty thousand dollar range, possibly. He also mentioned the possibility of having a graduate student doing one or both of these suggestions on a much larger scale to really study island coyote ecology. This, he gave us a rough estimated cost from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars, which I believe folds in the costs of scat and DNA analysis and radio telemetry. I wonder if our city might at least do the scat analysis to get a minimum count estimate of how many coyotes we have on the island. It would just be a minimum, it could be much more than what they provide. Or explore pulling together a collection of partners, Wild Dunes, Sullivan's Island, Dewey's, maybe Mount Pleasant, South Carolina DNR, which has evidently been tossed around similar ideas. John Kilgo, the researcher I mentioned in the UGA Ecology Research Lab at the Savannah River Lab, that maybe we could all do a larger study that would benefit everyone and ultimately allow other communities struggling with these issues some important insights. If the study was done mostly during the off-season, we might be able to find a real estate partner willing to donate housing, maybe Wild Dunes, which might this, make this more attractive to a grad researcher and lower cost overall. The goals would be a better population count to help gauge the problem and measure our success, and a better understanding of the population that might help us address the problem more effectively and eliminate their movements within our community and any overlap with our neighbors. And so I also thought it would be good for us to have the opportunity to all discuss if anyone would like to share their thoughts.
Susan, I've not heard anybody talk about the Mount Pleasant or mainland area. Obviously, these coyotes come from the mainland. We have a variety of spoils areas between here and the mainland of Mount Pleasant. Has anybody talked about trapping and being aggressive in those areas which aren't populated? And if not, could you look into that?
I had heard anecdotally from somebody that there was an independent person doing something like that on his own in Little Goat Island, and I can't even remember who told me that, but it was recently. Otherwise, I don't, I've not heard anybody bring it up. That might be, you know, in any case, even if we didn't go to, try to do research, probably would be good for us to be talking to the other municipalities. And I know, Linda, you have been to some degree.
The key to my suggestion is interdiction en route, either if they're migrating off the island and they're hitting those spoils areas, or they're coming back.
That's a good point, and it would prevent complications of people getting involved with efforts, with trapping even, or pets.
So just, thanks, Susan. There's a lot of conjecture about future research. We did not go over in detail in that specific committee meeting, but there's some other things I think are worth noting. I think council member Ward and I both have been discussing within this, I don't believe you're going to trap your way out of this problem. And if you look at the rate, you know, we've caught one with, you know, combined fifteen traps over the last several months, and at this rate, none of us are going to be alive, and the coyotes are going to own the island. So, yeah, there's a realistic approach here, right? We're either serious about it as a community, or we're not. I wouldn't be an advocate for continuing to spend money at the rate that we're catching coyotes. They'll be populating a lot faster than we can put traps out, and that's just reality. So I think this council needs to get serious about it. If we're going to try to reduce the population, I don't want to use the word eradicate, because I don't think it's possible. If you're going to reduce to realistic numbers that ensures public safety, then you're going to have to deploy a combination of methodologies, likely including hunting with people that are skilled at hunting, not advocating for residents to go out with guns and start shooting coyotes. But look, the math's the math, right? And Susan's correct, we don't know how many coyotes we have, but it's not two, right? So just offer that, you know, for future discussion. I'm not, you know, asking that, we're making decisions, but we've got to get realistic about this. Thank you.
And I can speak to, somewhat, to the hunting possibility, because our administrator did explain to us in committee that she's spoken previously with USDA Wildlife Services about the possibility of it, about that possibility. While the USDA does provide this service on occasion, they do not advise that course of action, and said it is very complicated in an urban area, in part because of trespass agreements that must be obtained from citizens because of a coyote potentially being injured in one location and moving to a different property. Person the administrator spoke with was clear that they would charge the city whether they were successful or not, and the minimum charge would probably be around five thousand dollars for a hunt of a couple of days, I think. So I, and I personally think any further discussion along those lines, while I understand where it's coming from, should take into account the potential liabilities and public relations issues the city would face, and the timing. If we were to seriously pursue that option, we should probably avoid that, the timing of it being, and we may have missed our window, I think, for, but.
Liabilities and all of it.
And at this point, I would think we would, before we went that route, we would want to wait until past tourist season. And that's, I'm finished with my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Public Works Committee.
The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, February first, at nine AM. I was selected chairman, and council member Rice as vice chairman. We had several citizens' comments. We received a report by Director Pitts. Trash continues to be picked up well with similar volumes, as well as debris. He also provided a vehicle maintenance report and indicated to us that the new software program that the city is using has made it effective for him to track budget items and administer his program. With regards to old business, there was an update on the trade draining issue at Thirty-Second Avenue. This is a classic issue of multiple jurisdictions being involved. Is it city property? Is it county property? Does the Corps of Engineers have jurisdiction? Are there other agencies with jurisdiction? It's been difficult for the local homeowner, but we have some resolution and a plan to begin some cleaning up of this drainage area, and then pursue a more long-term plan. The good news, it was reported, is that the Corps of Engineers does not have jurisdiction, and we will continue to follow this issue to its resolution. Let's see. The next item was drainage project, phase two drainage project. We have it on our agenda for a motion, I believe, Linda. That project is moving along. There's been some complications, as there typically are. However, it's viewed that that will be completed within the month of June. There was a discussion about the additional need for Public Works support staff. This was discussed last year with a detailed report to council. Right now, some of the items are being run in ad hoc fashion, and we are meeting on March first as a special meeting to take up a full plan in preparation of our budget issues. There was a discussion about the name of our committee. The committee historically has been the Public Works Committee. It was the will of the committee that it doesn't quite reflect the activities and oversight of this committee, but rather, we are recommending that the Public Works Committee be referred to as the Environment, Public Works, and Infrastructure Committee. This is much better representative of the actual jurisdiction, and especially with regards to the high priority that we and citizens put on draining, drainage concerns. We think the emphasis on infrastructure is important, and the management of that, even though there are multiple players involved, certainly including the state, and that the environment component of both how we impact the environment on the island, and how external factors impact our environment and our quality of life, is important, and we ask the council to take this action up and approve it. New business, there was a discussion about trash and the management of trash in several locations. Some is being put down without authority. However, Donnie's folks are diligent about cleaning it up and were mindful where there is either additional trash item put out, construction items, and so forth, that we've got to pay attention to that and make sure it's picked up and dealt with as quickly as possible. There was a discussion about the abandonment of unnecessary drainage easement in Wild Dunes. Linda, do you care to comment on any of the details of this?
Sure. This was an easement that we secured during the phase one drainage project, because we, you know, we thought it was going to be used during that project. We actually put the line in another easement, and so the easement that is situated there is not used by phase one, and, you know, obviously is not needed for phase two. I do not know of any purpose for which it would be needed by the city, so the recommendation of the committee and myself as well, is to abandon that easement so that it doesn't continue to bisect that property, which can be done on a motion of city council.
Is there a motion to take that action?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? And the ayes have it. Regarding that dialogue, we also talked about plans for additional expansion at Wild Dunes as part of this easement exchange, and it was made clear to the, by the committee, to the staff, that it's very important, and I think council would agree, that we get out ahead and inform the citizens when construction permitting and other activities take place. We do not have any specifics in terms of the future plans for that work, but it's our intent to keep the citizens informed. Our next meeting, as I indicated, is March 1st at 8:00 a.m. It'll be a special meeting to discuss the comprehensive nature of the Public Works activities, as well as some of their budgeting issues for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recreation Committee met Monday, February 5th. All committee members were present. Then we had elected a chair, where I was elected chair, and Councilmember Ward was elected as vice chair. The director gave a report for January, and as part of that, in brief, was retractable basketball goals will be installed in March, so the gym will be closed until such time as the installation is complete, but the cardio room will still be open. Some of the upcoming events and events that we just had include the Performance Workshop on April 19th. We had Cupid's Card Shop recently, and the Doggy Day at the Rec Center, which was a good turnout. Upcoming, we have the Front Beach Fest on March 3rd from noon until 4:00, and our annual Easter Egg Hunt will be Saturday, March 31st at 10:00 a.m. sharp. And the annual yard sale will be on Saturday, April 14th, from 8:00 a.m. until noon. We went on and had, under new business, had discussion of potential farmer market changes for this next season, for 2018. The Assistant Administrator stated that she was going to meet with the parties involved with that and will report on that in our next meeting. Moving on, we had discussion of opening the Rec Center on Sunday afternoons. The director stated that the Rec Center had been open on Sundays before, but it stopped the practice because of problems with staffing and availability, but we're going to continue to look at that. And we think a lot of that is just seasonal, too, but we'll continue to look at it as well. That's the end of our report, and our next meeting is 8:30, March 6.
Thank you very much. Personnel.
So, absent a chair of the Personnel Committee and also the Real Property Committee, until later action of this council to fill since the election those vacancies, with the mayor's permission, I'll just, I'll just go into both of those, give both of the reports, personnel, and then go right into real property. First, on personnel, in terms of vacancies with the city, Police Department is in the process of recruiting beach services officers. So, once again, I'd like to make a plug for, if you have a young student who is in college or something looking for work, it's, it's great on the resume to be able to have a second, have a season working for the Isle of Palms Police Department. I think it's something to consider, so we hope that if you have someone out there or know of someone, they'll apply for the BSO positions. With the Fire Department, we are expecting a resignation there, so we will have one firefighter vacancy. All other positions are fully staffed. Reporting on the Personnel Committee meeting, the committee met on Monday, February 12th. Members present. We have an update on the Personnel Handbook, which has been under review and in the process of being changed for a while, and we expect to have a draft copy to the committee for their March meeting. There was continued discussion of the personal goal of the city administrator. There was a lot of discussion, no conclusion. Some of the thoughts that were discussed during the process of that discussion was potentially future changes to our evaluation process in general, not just the city administrator, but, you know, some of the latest information being that annual evaluations are not really effective in changing, modifying people's behaviors, and so that maybe we should look at some other types of things. But no conclusions were come to concerning the city administrator's personal goal for the city administrator's evaluation. We also talked about doing some changes and refinement to the city's education reimbursement policy for the benefit of the public. The city has a, a education reimbursement policy where if someone wishes to pursue higher education during the course of their employment with the city, they're in good standing with the city, then they have to declare by February of each year, which is at budget time, to be considered by their department manager and then subsequently approved by the city in the city's budget, to be able to pursue some additional education, and then the city reimburses that on the basis of what their scores are in the subjects. And there are some things about the policy as it stands that we feel have some weaknesses and need to be refined, and so we're working on that, and that will be coming forward for the committee to work further on, and then coming forward to City Council, as will the changes, as will the changes to the Personnel Handbook. We also discussed the continuity plan that the city started working on last year. That, that plan identifies some critical areas that need to be addressed immediately and in the ongoing project processes, one of which is Public Works, which will be part of that special Public Works meeting discussion coming up. The Human Resources Officer has been working on that effort and will be coming forward with some information for the special meeting. Also of concern and talked about was that currently with the way the city is structured, the Chief of Police serves as the dual function, as the IT manager as well, which is not ideal, may have been fine as this, when the city was in its infancy, but now that it's, from an IT perspective, much more sophisticated, and all the knowledge rests with the Chief of Police, then we, we know that going forward, we're going to have to come up with some alternatives for making that better. Also, I wanted to just add that part of the concern in the Public Works Department is that the, the director wants to make sure that there is someone else within the department other than just him that is able to interface with Charleston County, South Carolina Department of Transportation, South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control, the NPDES Management, and someone else who would also be capable of being trained on underground storage tank reporting, and those are some of the things that, right now, we only have one identified person to be able to do that within the Public Works Department. We also had just acknowledgement, and just to remind everybody, we only have one more year of Bill Shupp's services in removing the beach trash and recycling, so the city is going to need to address how we want to continue that practice. So, the next meeting of Personnel is at 4:00 p.m. on Monday, March 12th. So, moving into real property, there were some citizens' comments at Real Property. Real Property met on Thursday, February 8th. Chris Crowley with Coastal Expeditions spoke to the committee. Just a couple of key points that he made, he expressed an interest in becoming a tenant of the city's rather than a sub-tenant of one of the city's tenants, and so he basically indicated that he wanted to start the conversation about that, and he made that appeal. He also expressed some concern about the Marina Plan that existed prior to going to referendum, and that concern was the proximity that Title Wave Water Sports would have been to where Coastal Expeditions would have been on the site. So, he shared with the committee that concern. There was also, well, I'll get to it later on the agenda, on the comments from Marina tenants. Carla Pope from Morgan Creek Grill read some comments from Jay Clark, because Jay was unable to be there, and, and the central point of that comment was sort of the desire to, to continue to have discussions about the lease, and then also some restoration of dockage that would be designated for, for Morgan Creek Grill. There was a little bit of discussion from Title Wave concerning the property tax bill, which is, we'll discuss a little bit later on the agenda, and just to keep them updated concerning that. The other announcement that Title Wave made, for which the city should be very proud, is that the, the safety handbook that Title Wave uses for their employees and their standards has been adopted by the Water Sports Industry Association of America and Lloyds of London as the baseline of all training for water sports companies throughout the world. So, yay, their safety record has, has been noticed, and their, the way they teach their safety has been noticed and picked up worldwide. The item related to the Palms Hotel was also discussed, but that has, action on that has been taken up already. We gave an update concerning the underground storage tanks replacement. Originally, the city had planned to try to replace the underground storage tanks at the Marina site first, and then do them at the Public Works site second. Due to some delays in being able to get those tanks in stock, the, the Public Works site will be treated first, and the Marina site will get its tanks replaced in October. So, same contract, just flipping which ones go first. There was some discussion about changes of the parking in the front beach lots. Basically, that was a suggestion for increasing staffing in the lots and trying to manage the lots more likely managed by the county parks lots. That it ultimately was decided that this, the parking should be a more global discussion, the lots, the on-street parking and everything, rather than just zeroing in on those specific lots under this committee. Also on the agenda was a discussion of Isle of Palms Adventures, which Michael Fim had developed a plan to try to have a central location in the city lots or somewhere at the front beach where people could do bookings for all kinds of things on the island, to include activities at the Marina. The advocacy in the plan was to kind of guide people to the front beach, let them make all their arrangements there, and perhaps even to ultimately morph that into some sort of shuttle service. Douglas Carr was there to explain the complications that doing something like that would have with the city code, and the need to make modifications to the city code if, in fact, something like that was going to be entertained. And, and I think that some of the committee members felt that there might not be appetite for changing the city code at this time, and so it did not look workable for this particular beach season. There was discussion of going forward with submitting, obtaining and submitting information to obtain permits for the Isle of Palms Marina dock replacement. There was a motion made by Councilmember Bell to recommend to Ways and Means that the city begin the permitting process for the replacements of the dock at the Marina, and to reach out to ATM for a proposal for that purpose. That was done and heard at Ways and Means, but did not receive a favorable action at Ways and Means for awarding the proposal that was submitted by ATM.
You have a question?
I'm sorry.
Just, just point on that, because there was some confusion on that. The discussion was around repairing the docks as it was submitted, and the reason that it was not approved, it in essence was an approval for Phase II of the Marina referendum, which was the complete replacement of the docks. There was never an intention in the motion that was made to do that. So, I recommended, and we had a discussion, that we narrow the scope of what we're talking about to necessary repairs on the docks, and then subsequently move it forward. But just for clarity, it was not a dock replacement and rebuild of the entire, in essence, of the entire Marina.
Thank you for that clarification. And so, we're adapting our approach to, to that alternative for working on this in the future. There was a discussion concerning the unattended intracoastal waterway docks. City Council, past City Council had amended the Morgan Creek Grill lease to take docks out of their lease. Those docks are currently not under anyone's lease, so they're just available, so there was a lot of discussion about that, and some suggestions made for alternatives related to those unattended docks. However, since Mr. Clark was unable to be, representing Morgan Creek Grill, was unable to be at the meeting because he was, because he had the flu, the committee felt like no action should be taken on that until they could have some discussion with Morgan Creek Grill and Mr. Clark. And the meeting concluded. The next meeting is at 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, March 8th, in the upstairs conference room. Also under real property is consideration of Charleston County Property Tax Notice for the Isle of Palms Marina. If, I mean, there is a possible motion that is listed later on the agenda that would be to, to authorize the city administrator and the city attorney to file a notice of objection and to take any actions necessary for the city to appeal the Charleston County property tax assessment of the city property. And so, either the council could make a motion in that manner now, or we can wait until after you've received legal advice in the executive session and decide what you would prefer to do.
So, we should wait?
Wait.
Wait.
That concludes the two reports from the Personnel and the Real Property Committee.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Lynda, we've mentioned the underground tanks at Public Works and underground tanks at the Marina.
Correct.
But do we not have underground tanks at the Public Service Building?
We do, but those were the correct type of tanks when they were installed. They're not as old.
Okay.
They're already double-walled.
So, we don't have to worry about those in this one?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Reports from city officers, boards, and commissions. Accommodations Tax Advisory, no meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in February. Planning Commission minutes were attached for everybody. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred, disposed of, none. Bills already in possession, I've counseled. And this is something that we brought up last month. And this has to do with flood damage prevention of the city of Isle of Palms Code of ordinances to provide a definition for the reference datum to be used for base flood elevation shown on flood insurance rate maps, and to provide a minimum elevation for residential and non-residential construction. We had several people speak up about that, talking about existing houses that are in slabs or, I call them LACO homes, homes that are built slightly off the ground. Do we want to go forward with this, or do we want to defer and have better information?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I've had some discussions with both the administrator and our building department. Like I said, I voiced my concerns about this and the fact that, one of the biggest complaints that we hear from a lot, from our residents, is the fact that we have a lot of these homes that are down, and we're losing that residential character of our island by these little, the homes, and, and our hands were always tied by FEMA, and the fact that, you know, there wasn't, you couldn't add on to these homes, the fact that you couldn't add on to the, you're tied by 50% value of the structure. FEMA is now reducing or relaxing some of their changes and allows us to, you know, keep some of these residential homes and add on to them. But like I said, I've, I've talked with the building department and the administrator, and we'd like to go ahead and offer some suggestions, so if you could defer this until next month, it would be preferable.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Make a motion to defer.
Make it before? Yes, sir.
So.
Let, let, we need a motion.
All right.
Make a motion to defer.
Just a second.
Okay, discussion. John.
When Councilmember Buchanan suggests, taking notes, these, these ordinances, will they have to go back to the Planning Commission with your suggestion to rework the ordinances, or are we hoping for additional information? I guess I'm looking for clarity on what are we deferring.
Yes, and Douglas is here in case I stumble. So, what we would propose to do in this deferral time is look at what options we might have for accomplishing the goal that, that Councilmember Buchanan has stated. And so, those may be changes elsewhere in the code. If those changes happen to be in the zoning area of the code, then certainly they would need to go back to Planning Commission. But what we would hope to do is, you know, present, we will preserve this change, and then we'll look at other sections of the code that might offer the relief that people are hoping for. And, and basically, that relief has to do within that five-year cumulative amount that you can improve these homes. And so, and then what we will present back to you for consideration, hopefully, in the next month, if we can get it done, would next month, if we can get it done, would be those suggested changes elsewhere and then an examination of the net effect of those so that you can weigh which alternative you would like to select. And so, it would preserve the ability to have this 14-feet requirement on new construction and also, you know, if a home is 100% destroyed in a storm, they're, and their base flood elevation didn't require them to go up 14 feet, then our ordinance would if this one is preserved. But we would make modifications elsewhere in the code and perhaps in this one to accomplish the goal that you're trying to achieve. And central to the point that Councilmember Buchanan was making, the reason we had that five-year cumulative amount, so in other words, you can't go over 50% of your value in improvements over a five-year tracking, was because it used to gain points for us on our community rating system. Having that in our code used to help us gain points, which saves, you know, money for the city, not just the city but for our citizens. And so, now that doesn't really gain us many points in the CRS rating, so it is not necessary really for us to keep it in that iteration of it. We may want to change it to some other iteration to offer some protections. I know there have been some other percentages that Douglas has discussed. So, we'll try to prepare something for you that says, preserve the 14 feet, but let's offer some corresponding relief in other areas of the code that will preserve these small homes.
Yeah, just a question in clarity also. I met with Douglas as well to try to get smarter. If I understand this correctly, if nothing had changed and a home were destroyed or, you know, brutalized during a storm, we have a 14-foot code in place now where that homeowner would still have to build to that, right?
14 feet.
Right? Today, if a 12 and 15. So, I think people need to understand, what we're trying to do is not just make the best of the new situation, but address a situation that's currently on the books, right? My understanding is, you know, and I have one of those homes, if I had substantial damage above 50%, I would be required to build at 14 feet. In my mind, this forces some residents off the island and that's, you know, simply an unfair thing to do. And I think Councilmember Buchanan's suggestion of addressing this in a way that we preserve both the character and recognize that this is home to a lot of people for a lot of years is the right thing for us to do.
Okay, we're going to divert it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just offer that we think about it globally, understand what numbers of homes that might apply to versus what we're trying to do for the greater good and the safety for an individual in your example that get wiped out by a storm. Most likely, they won't want to go through that experience again and they'd want to elevate. And of course, we see that up and down the East Coast, and I'm sure the planning commission will address that. Ryan, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Thank you, deferred. The next three items, '08, '09, '10, all have to do with sewer, having to do with lots close to then 152 or existing sewer line, subdivision of lots hooking up the sewer. I think we need to defer this, but I'd also like to defer it to a point where we can sit down with our planning commission and our water and sewer company and for all new council members and to have a refresh course on how this really relates to the Alapalms because it is a complicated subject.
Motion to defer.
Needs to be a good name for that.
Just for discussion, in light of the comments that we received today and I think it'd be prudent that we sat down and figured out what was going on over there and how the city can work more effectively with our water and sewer department and what is the problem that's, what is the interrupt between, their communication doom-babble between the two of us and see where we can improve that and to make it better for residents.
Absolutely. I mean, we heard earlier and I feel and I do think that we need to have a better understanding of what's going on.
So, Mr. Mayor, what you're suggesting is that staff arrange for all of us to meet at some point in like a task force or workshop situation where we can listen to, you know, how the planning commission came to this point, you know, because I know that they had talked about to the water commission also, but to get us all together so we're all hearing the same thing at the same time.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be great.
I would only ask that we do not defer this decision and process too long. It needs to be addressed whether you support improvements or whether you deny them. Let's not defer this too long. It has been under study for a year, 18 months, and we all know it's out there.
But we all have new council members who really need to understand this.
And we don't need to defer it for too long.
Mr. President, do you have a question?
I did want to say that I respect all of the planning commission's work on this. I want to thank them for that because it was a huge task and, but agree that because it's so complex, we need to have a fuller discussion and I also feel like we need to make sure that we're fully educating the public in an understandable way. As the report that the planning commission put together itself recommended that we are going to have to engage and inform the public for this if we make substantial changes to make sure that there's buy-in that goes along with it. So, there is a helpful Q and A on our website under the news section about the ordinances that have been proposed, but I feel like we can go further than that and maybe even providing a public forum beyond what we just have ourselves or incorporating and promoting the public being involved in our discussion more.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Pass this. All right. Introduction, new bills, resolutions, proclamations. An ordinance amending Title I, Government and Administration, Chapter Three Procedures, Committees, Ordinances, and Use of Code, Article B, Standing Committees. The use of Alapalms Code of Ordinance to change the name of the Public Works Committee to Environmental Public Works and Infrastructure Committee and to include review of environmental and infrastructure matters under described duties of such committee. This is a first reading only. Moving on. First reading.
Yeah, I need a motion for first reading.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can there be any discussion at this point?
It's typically not discussion at first reading.
Because it's tied lonely.
But, you know, if you guys have some input, then some change that needs to be made before second reading or at second reading, then...
I remember sitting in the audience and hearing a discussion of standing committees and what they do and how they do it, and I thought I heard that this needs to be looked at in a global manner rather than just taking one committee at a time. I thought that we were going to be looking at all committees and what they do and how they do it. And for me, I think we need to back up instead of just addressing one committee. We need to look at the municipal code in terms of all of the committees because if you look into the code, which I was looking at today, it does state some things that I don't think we're doing. Like, it states that there must be a monthly meeting of every standing committee. It also states that some of the, when you read the, what the committee is supposed to be doing, in some cases, that's correct, but in other cases, it's been expanded by so much more than what's in the code. I think we need to back up and look at the code and make those changes to all of the committees before we start changing a name of one. And there might be name changes for others, but instead of looking at just this one, why not us look at the municipal code itself and what changes need to be taken there? That's my concern here.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of changing the name, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against?
Nay.
Nay?
I was an aye, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a, maybe just do a roll call.
Better.
All right, all of those in favor of changing the name, please say aye and raise your hand.
No, I'd like to make an amendment to it. I appreciate what councilperson friends have mentioned, but we do have to look at this globally. I like the idea of moving forward and changing this, but the idea that we have and has been brought up before, that we want to look at all committees and look at the idea of moving forward and, and I'm not sure what the best way to do that is through the administration and through our attorney, to go through and almost put up our Excel sheet and a line item and see what these duties are composed of, where are the overlapping, where are there some of the new ones that are, that we need, what are some of the new objectives, what are some of the new focuses that we need to focus on, then go through and make those changes to the committees as a whole. But I do appreciate, I like that and the fact that we, I mean, this is a first step, but I think looking at all the committees together, I think is even a better step.
Is that your amendment?
What is the amendment?
Let me state what I think I heard and see if everybody agrees. So, I think I heard that it was a motion for first reading and that Councilmember Buchanan amended that motion to include...
To defer.
Oh, is it to defer?
I would defer. Well, I'd like to defer until we can go through it.
I didn't have it right then.
No, until we can get a synopsis of all the other committees and board. I think, you know, I'm in favor of changing the name, that's not a problem, but do we want to piecemeal each one of these every time one comes up or do you want to take it and be as transparent as possible and change it and look at all of it because then we might get to a point where, you know, some of these things are going to overlap.
And, Mr. Mayor, to his point, we may want to create new committees.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Rather than...
There's no second to that amendment.
There's no second to that amendment.
Point of order.
Yeah, I don't think we know what the exact amendment is.
The amendment is defer.
Just to defer until we can get more legal advice from the administration, from our city attorney and from administration on our committee assignments.
And I second that amendment.
I think the amendment wouldn't be to defer it, maybe just take back the initial motion and second and then we can just do a motion to defer, that'd make it easier.
Yeah, I think it's going to get too confusing.
It's very confusing.
So, whomever made the second, whomever made the motion would have to agree to...
I made the motion, I believe.
And Ryan.
So, I will withdraw.
Comment if I may.
Yes.
These aren't mutually exclusive. We're talking about renaming a committee to represent what the committee actually does. We can do this, you could use it as a model and you certainly can address all the rest of them. It's already been vetted by the attorney. You have the ordinance in front of you. This is not difficult. Or we can defer everything. And Ryan, maybe these things will be completed in your turn.
More discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I feel that in changing the name, you also could possibly change the functionality of the committee. Infrastructure is much more than what the Public Works Committee does now. Environment is much more than what the Public Works does now. I think that we need to look at globally, all of our committees and, well, even rather than just looking at the committees, looking at what the city needs and how it needs to address those things. These, the standing committees, if I'm correct, go back to 2009. So, I think it's time for us to review it and by not doing this right now, we can therefore look at it globally. That's, and I think that's what you're saying, right.
The description is in your attachment.
Yes, I know.
Okay, so...
They were withdrawn.
I will withdraw my motion and you second it. So, now we need a motion to defer.
Yeah, make a motion to defer until we can get, task, you know, the administration, the city attorney and the other committees to look at what is, bring, needs and to bring back forward to council.
Second amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Okay, motion is being deferred. Okay, first reading, title only, about noise. Noise of the City of Alapalms Code of Ordinances to Change the Hours During Which Piledrivers and Other Apparatus Attended With Loud and Disturbing noises May Be Operated to Provide Four Exceptions. Do I have a motion? We have one motion, we have a second.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. First reading.
I do have one question.
I just didn't see holidays actually.
I think that's in the...
It was in the discussion part of it, but it wasn't, I didn't actually see it in the ordinance, but I did notice that some other communities addressed holidays. So, I just wondered if we shouldn't consider holidays.
I think I put it in there, but let me look.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, certainly, this is point order for me, right? Because I made the original motion and it was, it was inclusive of holidays, it was inclusive of what other cities and communities were doing, but just from my understanding, we can't amend on a first reading to begin with, right?
I wasn't looking to...
No, 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 this is for me, right? So, I think what we're trying to do is move this forward, have the right language in it for the second reading and completely concur, we need to make sure we've addressed it in its entirety.
It's in there, it's in there. It is, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I just have one question. What holidays? Because the only holiday that people I know take a holiday on President's Day is the government and the banks. Everybody in the industry works for it, it's the regular day.
So, I said legal holidays, which would be like federal holidays.
Okay.
Fourth of July, Christmas, Thanksgiving. You can certainly make it federal, state and city holidays, you can make it what, you know, we can certainly expand it if you want, but for now it's...
Well, no, I'm not, I'm saying expanding it. We need to narrow its scope. Like, like I said, I don't know anybody that takes off President's Day.
Construction days.
Unless they're, we're government.
So, we would consider specific, naming specific holidays.
We could name specific holidays.
Yes.
But I think we could do that in other sections.
We probably need to look at wild days, what they do will be on the same page with them.
But that's going to be discussed during...
Exactly right.
Okay.
Well, and I do have, one thing is, I think there may be a discrepancy between what we voted on in committee because it was confusing and we went around back and back. I think we ultimately voted for a change to 6:00 PM on Saturdays, but I think the proposed ordinance says 4:00 PM. Is that...
I think that's a, I do agree with Susan's comment for what it's worth. I think it was 6:00 PM. We did discuss 4:00 at one time, but the fact that we're going to come back with an amendment for the second reading, it suffices for now.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Consideration of appointment, city council standing committees. My seat was vacated with two years left. When I appointed the different committees, I had two committees that had temporary members. One was real property and in that temporary spot, we had John Moy in there. I make a motion that Sandy Ferentz upon her election be replacing John Moy in that category under real property.
Second.
That's the second?
I think I should be the one to do it.
Good, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Under personnel, same exact type of thing. Jimmy Ward is put under personnel on a temporary basis pending my seat being replaced. Sandy Ferentz, who is elected, I make a motion to Sandy Ferentz replace Jimmy Ward under the personnel committee.
My second.
You want to get off that pad?
I'm just glad to have Sandy back.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Okay, this is something that Jimmy Carroll, the mayor, brought back up. Discussion from the transportation sales tax grant to build a sidewalk from 28th Avenue Palm Boulevard to Hartnett Boulevard. Initially, I was in favor of that, but I walk the island on a regular basis and I look at that street and I really don't see it being used that often. So, I wanted to bring it before council and make a motion so we can discuss it of not using that money for that sidewalk. So, I make that as a motion.
Second.
Now, we have discussion.
I recommend we refer that.
We what?
Refer that. Push it down the road, talk about it some more, take it up next month.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that anytime we can have sidewalks, that we should be so grateful and so thankful. This goes to the rec center, which I just think the whole point is safety and if we can actually make it safer for kids ingressing and egressing into the rec center or adults or seniors... center, or adults, or seniors, or anybody, I think we should just jump on board and be dancing in the streets. I mean, I think it's a great thing.
Or on the sidewalks.
Or on the sidewalks, exactly. Thank you.
Counselmember, what?
Mr. Mayor, I'd love to hear from someone who was on the original committee of public safety that made this recommendation as to why this was the project that they specified.
I don't think there's anybody left.
Nobody left.
No.
All right. I don't know. Administrator Linda, if you could help shed some light, I know we're asking you to go back.
Okay, so both with transportation sales tax funding request and county transportation committee funding request, typically we approach council and committees about what those projects should be. And several different things were discussed. I actually don't recall which things they were at that time, but one of the things that was discussed was more sidewalks and better connectivity for pedestrians and also cyclists, which are high priority items for transportation sales tax. They have a pot of money just for that. And the, you know, there is that disconnect between the trail that walks around the entire perimeter of the rec center and also Palm Boulevard. And at certain times of the year, there is walking in that section of road that connects, on 28th Avenue, that connects Palm Boulevard to Hartnett. And, you know, there's some parking that's on, you know, the sides of that road where people who own property there. What we did before the application was submitted, the city sent a letter out to citizens, not knowing which side of the road it was going to go on. We sent a letter out to citizens on both sides. We had, actually had a meeting with one citizen, maybe a couple, and then one of the people, there was only really two that I recall objecting, and one of them, his objection was on the basis of they felt like if a sidewalk was available, that people would speed more, that people walking in the streets actually slowed the traffic down. So their advocacy was, don't put in a sidewalk because people will speed more. And then the others' objections, when we submitted the application, we did not know which side of the street the side, the engineer would recommend making that connectivity. We now know it's the western side, and the couple that objected before are actually on the eastern side of 28th and Palm, so the construction of the sidewalk does not really impact them. This is a grant application we made, it was awarded, and the engineering has been done on the project. So those transportation sales tax funds have already been expended to the extent that engineering has been paid for. And of course, this is a source of money that we continue, this is a source of funding that we continue to ask for. So part of the risk here is that obviously we bumped another recipient out of the line of receiving money in order for them to award money for us. So then when we're up for a request in the future, there's the chance that that might be remembered, and we will not be smiled upon favorably because, you know, of having not...
Been appreciative.
Yes, embraced the amount that they were investing in the community.
I have a request, and to John's point, since it came through public safety, is that correct?
Yes.
This issue?
Yes.
Could the chief please come to the mic?
You mean Chief Buchanan, right?
Yes.
We've got two chiefs.
Other chief bailed on us.
State your name and address.
Chief, I'd like you to reply to this question. Is having additional sidewalks on the island a preferred issue with regards to safety?
Anytime that you can have a sidewalk in an area where you have recreation occurring and it can funnel the recreation people, it is certainly a preferable way of doing.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the rec director to come up, since he referenced recreation. Norma Jean, as rec director, do you think that having a sidewalk in the location that was applied for, approved by council, and was about to begin construction, going to the rec department is a good thing for families, children, and seniors?
Wow, leading the witness.
He likes talking.
I plead the fifth. No. You know, the, actually, we use 28th a lot, particularly in the summer months, because we walk the summer camp, campers to the beach, and we have to walk in the street. If there were a sidewalk there, obviously, we would use the sidewalk.
Thank you both very much. I don't want to take up any more of your time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, how much is this grant for? I mean...
Do you remember? Here, it's in a hundred and forty thousand.
Hundred and forty thousand. And I know there was discussion in terms of other sidewalks that are in very poor repair and whether or not they needed to be looked at before a new one was put in. And I'm referring to the sidewalks along Waterway Boulevard and on Palm, where we have some really bad sidewalks. Was Palm and Waterway not considered because of the extent of that project, that there would not be enough grant money to do that type of project, rather than putting in a new sidewalk? Because we've got sidewalks that are in such bad repair that they're more of a safety hazard than not having a brand-new one is.
I don't recall that being discussed at the time. It may have been, and I just don't remember.
The city submitted four projects, three of them were pedestrian-related, and the only one that was funded was that sidewalk, which was the priority number three.
So they didn't take the top priorities?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ma'am, I have one more thing here.
Thank you, Desiree.
Thank you. I did talk to one of Charleston County council members, and they said we would not be penalized. You know, I'd much rather see when we come off the connector and Isle Palm's to have a pedestrian path and cyclist path where it's safe coming off that road. I do agree with Norma Jean as for the summertime recreation and the kids going to and from the beach, that is a safety concern, and by having a sidewalk, that would help. So, again, number three is where it was. I'd much rather see it footed a bridge. This is not a big deal to me, but I just wanted to bring it up. I wanted a healthy discussion amongst council. Yes, ma'am?
So I think it's important to note that this is $140,000 that was granted to us, that it's not, we can't now go to them and say we'd rather spend it on something else. So I think that that's definitely important, and we've already spent how much of it?
I don't know if you got an answer to that today. So we don't spend it. Charleston County spent it on our behalf.
So we would, they've already spent money on this.
Correct.
And we would be telling them, we don't want this anymore.
Correct.
And you wasted your money on a project that we know we don't want. So, okay. I, yeah, I would have concern about that, and who would be footing the bill if they could potentially turn to us and say...
I don't know that they would do that. Just like the mayor said, I doubt that we would be penalized that way. They might would want to reduce a future award by that amount, but I think as much as anything, it would just color their consideration. It's not just county council, there's a transportation sales committee you got to get passed as well, so...
And we've already gone to them with another set of projects that we're hoping to get funding that are under consideration.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think the biggest problem is, I mean, I don't understand why the scope wasn't to improve our current sidewalks, not to create another one that's not going to be maintained. The, you know, and I think the fact that, you know, not accepting $140,000 of free money from the county, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, because we're just going to lose it, you know, and then put a black eye on the fact that, for any other type of funding we have in the future. Do I agree that it's, you know, while we use that a lot, you know, I think the monies could have been, or the committees or whoever voted to support it, could have used it in a better way, but, I mean, that's the past.
Counselmember Ferentz?
But I understand it wasn't our decision.
Right.
We gave them three choices, and they chose the third rather than our first and second.
Exactly.
I think we need to be, I guess, a little more attentive to what we ask for. If we really want to put our eggs in one or two baskets, put them there rather than opening up to something new.
And they probably, this was just not a huge one, so they could fund this. It was easy, so they didn't choose the larger ones, which were, you know...
That's why I said, maybe we need to be more attentive to what we ask for.
You know, something's better than nothing.
One quick comment. I agree with Ryan, it should have been, could have been better spent. The majority of the traffic, I live on Hartnett, that I see going back and forth to the rec centers on Cameron and Hartnett. It's not on the side streets. You know, it's where the kids live, and they're going up and down just streams of them. Hartnett and Cameron, why wouldn't it apply for there instead of 28? But that's water and a bridge.
I made a motion. All in favor of...
I don't think there was a motion. Is there a motion?
Okay, then no motion needed, we're going forward just the way it was.
Wait, let Murray check.
There was a motion.
This motion was not to use DFC funds for 28th Avenue. Have we used that?
And we had a second.
We have a second.
Okay. Then all those in favor of not using this money, raise your hand. Not using this money, raise your hand. Okay, all in favor of using money, say yea.
Yea.
Okay.
Yea.
Eight to one. Okay, now, a report on the attendance of the Multry School District Two constituent. I think Councilmember Smith is going to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended Charleston County's Multry District Two constituent school board meeting recently as a result of an invitation that they extended to Isle Palm City council members and other local government officials. So just to get back and let you all know what happened, they are beginning a conversation on rezoning options that affect East Cooper Middle and High Schools that will attract attention as this continues. And one option does have Isle Palm's and Sullivan's Island kids getting rerouted back to Lang from Multry Middle School, and also would mean that they, that our kids continue to go to Wando instead of the New Beckham High School. So it doesn't sound, from the conversation that I heard, that that will be the most likely option that they pursue, but it's possible, and the fact that they are even considering it is probably going to be a surprise to our families. So the conversation should continue into the spring and may ultimately wind up affecting all three middle schools in Mount Pleasant. I spoke personally, more as a parent than a council representative during the meeting, just to say that we, our communities would likely want to encourage them to keep students from the two islands together instead of splitting them up and going to different middle schools after elementary school, and otherwise that they should consider the extended distances that Sullivan's Island families have faced when they have to travel to Lang versus Multry or to the new Wando versus Beckham High School.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. We're going to have to go into executive session, but before we do that, I just want to remind everybody that this Saturday, again, from 12:00 to 4:00, is the Front Beach Festival. Please come, it's a lot of fun. The Tams will be back.
We will dance in the streets.
We will dance in the streets. Both young and young at heart will have fun. Also, Recycle Shred Day, Saturday, April 28th, 9:00 to 12:00, noon, at the large municipal parking lot. Old paints, paper, all that kind of good stuff.
Electronics.
Electronics, bring it down there. Uh-oh, down it, yep, okay.
We're seeing a lot of it out there now, so that's...
So please, if you've got old stuff, that's when you want to bring it. Our next council meeting is going to be on March, is it 27?
Regular council.
Regular council meeting. We have March 27, 6:00 PM, and I need to have a motion to go into an executive session.
So moved. Say four.
Yeah, to receive legal advice concerning...
On tax assessments.
Charleston County Tax Assessment on City Property.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all for coming, very much. Okay. I think we lost a council member, but, all right, we just left executive session. We have an action item, authorization for the city administrator and city attorney to file a notice of objection to take any other actions necessary for the city to appeal the Charleston County Property Tax Assessment, city property. Just to say motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Do I have a motion for?
Motion, jury, jury.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry.